So if we can get back to the table. Okay, counsel, at this time, we do have a motion on the floor by Garfield Steele, seconded by Jackie Sears to. The motion is to, on complaint number one, submitted by Mr. Michael Bringsplenty, to dismiss complaint with prejudice. And I'll call, roll call. James Cross?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly? Donnarosso Bear? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
B. Frando?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman? Craig Dillon?
No.
Garfield Steele?
Yeah.
Julian Spotted Bear? Only according to ordinance number twenty seventy-four, no. Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
No.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Declared not voting.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha, yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Motion carried, sixteen yes, two no, two not voting. At this time, I'll turn the chair back over to President Frank Starr comes out at two thirty-five.
Okay, so, um. We're still under complaints here, so we'll move on to the next complaint.
Counsel, your next complaint, complaint number two, is submitted by Audrey Martinez.
Okay, at this time, I'll turn it over to Secretary.
So the complaint is on Audrey, or submitted by Audrey Martinez.
Madam Secretary?
Go ahead.
I guess not, Mr. Chair, um. Motion to accept this complaint?
Okay, motion to accept a complaint by Councilman Steele, seconded by Councilman Greenwall. Oh, you had a question? Oh, okay. All right. So no second? Seconded by Councilman Dillon? Call for the vote.
James Cross?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Not voting.
Donnarosso Bear?
No.
Blaine Little, or, sorry, Bold Little White Man?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
No.
B. Frandl?
No.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Yep.
Julian Spotted Bear?
No.
Norman Standing Soldier?
No.
Troy Little?
Not voting.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
I'm not voting.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
No.
Jackie Sears?
Not voting.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Yeah, no.
George Dreamer Junior?
Stained.
Eight yes, seven no, one abstained, four not voting. Motion carried.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
You know, this other individual came to law and order numerous times, and I think he does have valid concerns. So I'll make a motion that we accept this complaint by Mr. Justin Musso on Judge Ken Bordeaux.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Steele. Seconded by Councilman. Lunderman, sorry. Call for the vote.
James Cross?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Not voting.
Donnarosso Bear?
Yes.
Bold Little White Man?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
No.
B. Frandl?
No.
Tyler Lunderman? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Yep.
Julian Spotted Bear, yes. Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Abstained.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Not voting.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
No.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
George Dreamer Junior?
Stained.
Thirteen yes, three no, two abstained, two not voting, motion carried.
Your last complaint is submitted by Ruth Steele against non-member.
Question?
Go ahead.
So, does this set up another hearing? Is that what this is doing? Okay, my motion would be to accept it and set that hearing up?
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor, Councilman Steele, we have a question, go ahead, Councilman Greenwall. To our attorney, um. Being that this is a non-Indian, does it still require us to have a hearing for her? It would be under the bad man.
You can do an emergency exclusion if it, if there's like an imminent threat type situation, or there's harm, irreparable harm that can be caused. So, it's up to you guys how you want to do that. If you do an emergency exclusion, which you guys will be addressing today, uh, those, they, they get notice, they have the opportunity to, uh, request a hearing within seventy-two hours of receiving the uh, banishment order or exclusion order. So, it's up to you guys if you feel like it's emergent enough to do a exclusion, or, or you can do a, a, a regular removal, which, which would be a hearing.
That'd be the reason, kind of how I asked that, is because when they came in, I don't know if some of you remember that, when they came in, there was, the lady was afraid, she was being harassed, this non-Indian lived next door, and it seems like they've been put through hell, you know, but, um, so for me, that's our tribal member, that's who I'm trying to protect, not the, the white girl that's here, you know? So, just putting it out there.
Question?
Sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I think, um, on her, the complaint, it just says banishment on Shannon Harison, is that how you say her name? But when you read the complaint, it says also her son, Jesse Steele, so we need to, how are we gonna do that?
Um. I would exclude uh, Mr. Steele out of the complaint due to the fact that, um, he is a landowner, and he is a tribal member. So, that'll be my request to the councils to exclude Mr. Steele out of the the complaint.
I think one other thing too is, it sounds like he's incarcerated, so at this point, you wouldn't even want to address that other one. But right now, you're trying to address who's left out there because they live feet apart from one another. So, I think we need to address the non-Indian. Right. Councilman Poyer?
Chair, do we have the right though to amend complaints? That's the person's complaint that signed it, so we we start making changes to it? I don't know about that.
So it states a request for, uh, banishment on, uh, the non-member and the, the tribal member. So it's not really combining them, you guys can do what you want, if you want to do uh, banishment for both of them, or if you just want to do one or the other, it's up to you guys how you want to do that, you wouldn't be amend, you wouldn't be changing the complaint, you'll be, you'll just need to decide how you're responding to the complaint. So you can do one or the other, or you can do both of them, not in the same order, but in separate orders. If, did I confuse you more? So she's requesting banishment of both of them. You can decide as counsel if you want to banish both of them, or if you just want to banish one or the other.
I guess what I'm saying though, we're changing the complaint of the, of her complaint. That's what I'm saying, I don't know if we have the right to do that.
You're not changing the complaint, you're changing, you're, you're deciding how you're responding to the complaint.
We're taking a name off, that's changing it.
No, you're, you're deciding whether or not to accept the banishment complaint on them. So if you want to just accept one, or you want to accept both of them, that's up to you guys.
Councilwoman Spotted Bear?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I think we see both the, the permanent restraining orders on both Jesse and Shannon. Um, and I don't see what the difference is, that Jesse is a, a tribal member, we've banished tribal members before, and that she, there's provided insufficient enough of evidence of text messages between Jesse or from Jesse, also with the threats in here. However, if we can utilize the bad man clause against a non-tribal member to banish them today, or exclude them today, and then accept the complaint on Jesse for a hearing um, to, to go through that process, is that, is that something we can do? And if that's the case, um, I don't, I think there was a motion made to accept it. Um, but if not, I would accept the, or I would like to make the motion to utilize the bad man clause on Shannon Horizon Steele, Harrison, Horazin, Steele, and, um, Jesse Steele for a hearing. So, rather than saying the bad man clause, you would be doing an emergency exclusion on a non-member? Then my motion would be the emergency exclusion on Shannon Horazin. Am I saying the name correct? I don't know if I'm saying the name correct or not. But what's in the complaint? And then for Jesse Steele, a hearing on that individual.
Okay, we have a question, go ahead, Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston.
You know, um, I think what Davy is saying is correct, I mean, we can't change a complaint, the complaint was filed with the secretary the way it was written. And the way this lady is writing the complaint is, uh, banishment on that non-Indian, but also she mentions her son. So, we can't change that complaint because she's, uh, wording it that way. And so, we just have to, um, our attorney, what you're saying is that we only, uh, do a, emergency exclusion on the non-member, but the tribal member that Garfield's talking about is a landowner and a tribal member. Plus, I don't see no, even though he's incarcerated, I don't see, uh, any charges on, I mean, you know, where he got through the court and they got him for all this, whatever he's being charged with, he's not been convicted yet. So I think that, um, so there's two parts to this, but at the same time, the complaint is written as is, and so you're saying we can act on one part and act on another part. So, but I just was gonna put that out there, that, um, complaint was written as is, so it's really hard when it's written that way, but.
But, go, go ahead.
You know, I, I don't know which part we're not hearing from our attorney when she says we're not changing the complaint, we're just deciding on how we're going to accept the complaint. Now, if you guys recall, when we, when we, um, did this banishment on the drug offenses and the bootlegging, we incorporated another piece that allowed us to banish people who were not convicted, who are, who were picked up for, um, allegedly, um, selling drugs and alcohol, and we could banish them until they're either convicted or not. And if they're convicted, then their banishment stays, and if they're not convicted, then their banishment goes away, and that's how we, we, we addressed that ordinance. So either way, I think we would be okay, but there is a process to, to banish tribal members. And that's why it's different from the non-member. So I, 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 I get, I get that there's an attempt to banish them both, but the process has to be different because one is a non-member and one is a landowner.
It's based on the, the emergency part of it, so if you've got one that's incarcerated, how much of a emergency is it? So, and you got one that's out there currently posing a threat, so that would be a, an emergency.
So, so Mr. Chair, I would draw my motion and allow, um, Councilwoman Spotted Bear to go through with her motion, and I'll second hers.
Okay. Councilwoman, you okay with that?
Yes, because it allows the tribal member the due process.
Okay.
Hearing.
So we got a second on that?
I just, I just want to clarify that they both get due process, the emergency has the responsibility to notify the secretary for that hearing. With the other, uh, uh, process, that they get the, the drawn-out process, so they will get the notice, uh, before the hearing, so. But we're talking about the non-member, the non-member, oh, okay, so, but the non-member is removed immediately?
Councilman Kelly?
You know, we, uh, we, we talk about being ethical and being honest with ourselves, but yet we're still talking, uh, nonsense, basically, but I just want to shed some light because I was there at the hearing at Prairie Winds Casino, and I, I was asked to recuse myself. And I did. I said absolutely nothing. But, to date, you folks have only heard one side. This side. You're already saying he's incarcerated. Right now, he's at a bronc riding school up at Tom Reeves' place in Eagle Butte with his son. Mr. Poyer and I, the land committee chair, have been working on a plan to resolve the issue by allowing Mr. Steele to get a small section or a small two-and-a-half acre property three miles down the road, which will separate both families. We're hoping it solves the issue. I just wanted to shed a little bit of light on that, I will still not have a vote in any of this, but you know, you guys listen to one side and not the other, and it, it kind of, it's not right. Hell, these are my neighbors. I gotta put up with this stuff. And I've sat here and listened and listened and listened. None of you guys come out to Rocky Ford. But yet you're making a hasty knee-jerk decision. So I'm just telling you. Myself and, and Mr. Poyer are trying to resolve the issue equitably, fairly, honestly. And this has been dragging on for, what, this is the second administration? This is a carryover from last administration, and I just want to throw that out there. So, if you guys want to be fair, be fair about it, that's all I'm saying, thank you.
Councilwoman Spotted Bear?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I think you hit it on the head. I don't believe it's a knee-jerk reaction when we're talking about it being drug on from last administration. If this has been going on for that long, I mean, you have two representatives that can speak for your district to give that, provide that input. So, providing that input now into this conversation helps with that decision, and I believe that, that would have been necessary prior to the motion, and would have helped with, before this motion being made. And I think it would have helped prior to this coming to the floor, if it was a discussion that was had prior to Tuesday, today. Now, I'm only simply going off of what's given to us, because this is what's brought to commit to our council floor. We don't get to see any of this information at all prior to the council floor, and we're having to make these decisions. That is why I asked earlier for an executive session, because we don't get to see this stuff, and you're asking us to make ethical decisions with what's handed to us. So, based off of this allegation and the evidence within this packet, I'm having to make a motion or a decision off of this, unless the representatives from that district speak up on behalf of that individual. So, with your opinion, I appreciate that. Um, so I don't believe I made a, I made a hasty decision. Um, and I don't like that, that it's being suggested that we're not looking out for our community members, I'm simply having to make a motion based off of a packet that was given to me the day of within minutes having to make a decision. Um, so if you have a, a, if you have another suggestion, that's, I believe that's what this dialogue is for, thank you.
Chair, if I may respond?
Yes, go ahead.
You know, when we took this oath of office, is why I did not say anything, because I understand what's happening. It, it is one of my in-laws, however, we're all in-laws out there. And I didn't think it was my place to speak on a defendant that isn't here to address the issue. But my issue was, it's only one-sided. At the hearing or at the meeting that we had at Prairie Winds Casino, we only heard one side, we didn't get to hear the other because we also found out it was in court. So therefore, it went back to court. It, it, it's continuous, and it's sickening that we have to go through this and address it, but you know, like I, like I mentioned earlier, myself and, and Mr. Poyer are, are working to resolve the issue because it, it shouldn't even be here. It shouldn't be here at all. So we are making an attempt to address the issue, but. uh, like I said, you know, I'm, I'm just gonna recuse myself from everything. I, I just had to put that out there. I don't think these things we mentioned earlier, you know, several of us should recuse ourselves from the other dealings, which they did. And I didn't hear anything out of them. So I was following suit, you know, trying to be honest, ethical about all this. But when we don't play by the rules and, and you know, at some point, I'm gonna have to say something. No offense, but I'm just gonna have to say something. So thank you.
Councilman Steele and Councilwoman, Councilwoman Halverson.
Yes, you know, Mr. Chair and, and Council, on this issue, I think we're beyond just moving them down the road from each other. Um, recently, I think within a, a, a four weeks back, I received a video footage from Mrs. Ruth of um, the individual cussing at them at a gas pump in, in Sharps, even though they had a restraining order. Calling them the B word and everything. And so this is deeper than just moving them down the road. And, and you know, no offense to nobody, but I, I don't go to Rocky Ford, but these individuals do, you know, live in my district and they came to me with, with a concern. And like I said, there's numerous people that come to all of us. And, and my colleague, you know, he's, he's never in and around Madison, and I can't say, you know, he shouldn't make a decision based on Madison, but, because he's a representative from there. But he's never in or around Madison. So this case here, you know, it is long drawn out and, and regardless, they're going to have a hearing where they can both be heard. And the only reason why they weren't heard in, at the casino was because the council stopped it because it was in court. So if you allow a full blown out hearing, then you'll hear everything. So it's not like we're not trying to hear the other side. What this is doing is setting up a hearing to allow them both to be heard.
Councilwoman Halverson and Councilwoman Greenwell.
Um, yes, thank you, Chair. We have a member in the audience who's been raising her hand. However, I asked her to stick strictly to this topic only. But I'll give her a few minutes. I'll yield the floor to her for a few minutes.
Good.
Hello, um, Madak Yapi, thank you. Um, Anna, uh, just real quick, don't forget the stabbing in Wounded Knee. Don't forget that two years ago, and I was a correctional officer, and my trailer got broken into eight times. My eagle feathers got stolen, and I asked the tribal council then, please do something about it. There was nothing done. So this tribal council right now, what happened a couple of weeks ago was you had a um, a tourist who got stabbed in the neck. Anger gets that, that bad. So that's just a friendly reminder. Keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
Councilwoman Greenwell.
Thank you, Chair. So when you, you and a Mr. Poyer have information and it's not divulged to the rest of us, and then come in here and make it sound like we're the bad guys, I don't accept that, man, because if, if you got information, you should be sharing it. None of us are aware that this guy wasn't in jail. So if he's not in jail, maybe we need to have a hearing with him here too as well. What I get concerned about is if I have little kids being set up on a four-wheeler and somebody puts a wire across the road to try to cut their heads off when they're going by on an ATV and videotaping it. I got concerns because those are Arlo Cota children. I don't care about her. She's a non, she's a non-Indian. She's not a, a non-member from my understanding. From what she said when we met her that last time I seen her, she is a non-Indian. She's, she's other than Indian. She's not from another reservation, so I gotta worry about these kids. I gotta worry about these grandmas, this grandmother and her, her family that live next door to them. God forbid, one of us have a, a non-Indian, a white person terrorizing us on our own damn reservation. How dare we sit back and allow somebody to do that? We had another case before us. We had a, a person who's handicapped get assaulted by a, a non-Indian right at Buies. We have uh, recordings from uh, him going into one of the dispensaries raising holy hell with our native women. You know, but nothing was ever done about that either. Let's just let people come to our reservation and treat our people like crap. Not while I'm here, man. Holy shit, we need to do something. When people are coming here as guests, they need to act accordingly. Respect our laws, respect our people, don't disrespect our women and our, our children. She's a guest here. Even if she's to marry this guy, she's still a guest here. She's not a member of our tribe. So I don't, I don't feel like it's you know, okay to kind of scold us when we're not privy to that information. Let us all know about it. I know you guys know about it. Tell us about it so I can make a good, sound decision, you know? But I still think we need to address this because what I'm reading here, I, I think it deserves at least a hearing. Thank you.
Councilman Poyer, or, I'm sorry, hold on, hold on. Council, Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston, then Councilman Poyer.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that um, we're talking about the complaint now. So now it sounds like uh, from the last time it went to court and, and now the attorney's saying there's protection orders on both of them. So with that being said, then um, we're acting on it. There's protection orders, but it sounds like it's not being abided by. So, you know, I just think we just need to uh, run the motion and just get this uh, set up so that maybe we can hear both sides of what Mr. uh, Kelly is saying and hear both sides of it, because we're only hearing one side. So we need to hear both sides, and maybe at that time we can um, make a, a good sound decision on it. So I think that's what needs to take place right now.
Okay, Councilman Poyer. And then we're gonna run the motion.
Mr. Chair, we're, I'm not withholding any information. One of them applied for a home site lease. That's public information. Where the lease is at, that's what we're trying to find out. Everybody goes to that. They have to wait for them home site leases to go through the process. So I and Mr. Kelly are trying to follow up on it to see where it's at. So it'll help diffuse the, what's going on. So we're not withholding any information. I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay, Secretary, call for the vote.
For further clarification for the motion. Motion by Gillian Spotted Bear, seconded by Garfield Steele to utilize the emergency exclusion to banish Shannon Horizon today and to have a hearing set up for Jesse Steele.
Does that sound right?
Yes, because that's accepted in this complaint.
Okay.
James Cross?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Not voting.
Donna Ghost Bear?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
No.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Garfield Steele? Gillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Abstain.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Not voting.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Not voting.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Fifteen yes, one no, one abstain, three not voting. Motion carried.
That completes the um, complaints at this time. Can you please turn in all the written complaints? Thank you.
...
And whereas Roman Vasquez is a non-member who resided within the Medicine Root District of the Pineridge Indian Reservation who is a threat to the health, safety, and general welfare of tribal members and has caused harm to a young male tribal member. And whereas the matter has been reviewed by the Education Committee and referred on to the tribal council and recommends emergency action by issuing an order of exclusion due to the threat of irreparable harm against tribal members. Now therefore be resolved that the tribal council of the Ogalsu Tribe determines there is a state of emergency in this matter and that grounds exist for immediate exclusion based on unlawful acts involving a young tribal member. And be it further resolved that the tribal president or vice president shall cause the order as attached and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth herein to be served upon Roman Vasquez by law enforcement and that any police officer shall effectuate his immediate removal from the Pineridge Indian Reservation. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagles, second by Councilman Weston, and Councilwoman Sears. Call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Donner Ghost Bear?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Beef Rando?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? Garfield Still? Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Unanimous, twenty, motion carried.
Thank you.
Oh, we got a question. Go ahead.
Um. Yeah, when I was two thirds in my, um, E B and D's agenda items, and I, um, I know I've brought it out to, to the council to see if we could put, um, the resolution of appointing Jackson to, to the, um, to the general manager?
Yeah.
Because of the resignation of Stanley?
Yeah. We, we have two more exclusions to vote, and then-
But after that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Um. Councilman Jumping Eagle, were you done? Okay, so Councilman Weston.
Uh, thank you Chair. We also have an exclusion coming from, um, Law and Order. Um, the resolution of the Ogalsu Tribal Council of the Ogalsu Tribe authorizing the issuance of an emergency order of exclusion for Jeremy Daniel Calderon to be immediately removed from the Pineridge Indian Reservation. And I'll skip down to the fourth, whereas whereas Jeremy Daniel Calderon is a non-member who resides within the Medicine Root District of the Pineridge Indian Reservation who violated the law and is a threat to the health, safety, and general welfare of tribal members and has caused harm to a female tribal member. And whereas the matter has been reviewed by the Law and Order Committee and referred on to tribal council and recommends emergency action issued and order of exclusion due to the threat of irreparable harm against tribal members. Now therefore be resolved that the tribal council of the Ogalsu Tribe determines there is a state of emergency in this matter and that the grounds exist for immediate exclusion based on his criminal history and current indecent acts towards tribal, a tribal member. And therefore be it further resolved that the tribal president or vice president shall cause the order as attached and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth herein to be served upon Jeremy Daniel Calderon by law enforcement and that any police officer shall effectuate his immediately removal from the Pineridge Indian Reservation. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Weston, second by Council Spotted Bear and Councilman Jumping Eagle. Secretary, call for the vote.
James Cross? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Donner Ghost Bear? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Beef Rando?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Unanimous, twenty, motion carried. You go ahead, Councilwoman.
Um, we have a tribal member in the audience who would just, um, that pertained to the issue that was just passed, um. Did you wanna get the floor? Give her a few minutes on this issue?
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Celestine Stadnik, and I really appreciate you guys for doing this, um, for me, but also for our community. I went into Law and Order, in front of Law and Order, um, a couple weeks ago with this issue, and I just wanted to thank you guys so much for um, believing me and bringing me that respect. Um. I always, you always hear about whenever people experience, um, sexual, like misconduct, that they're not believed. And it's just, I'm so proud to be Lakotan, to be part of you guys, um, because you did um, such a good job. After I came to Law and Order, I went home and that guy's, he called me and he told me this man has been convicted of sexual battery. But not only that, he has also been charged of rape, um, assault, stalking, and, um, breaking restraining orders. And he said, everything that happened to me is the exact ammo that has been shown over the years, and that's his pattern. So me coming and you putting an immediate stop to this prevented bad things from happening, and I just really wanna say that I appreciate each and every one of you.
I'd also like to say, I'm so proud of you, Celestine, for standing up against all that has been committed to you. Um. I'm proud of people who use their voice in the good way against acts of violence. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Did you have one more?
Yeah.
Is that one from us?
That passed out. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'll read this one off too. Um. The resolution of the Ogalsu Tribal Council of the Ogalsu Tribe authorizing the issuance of an emergency order of exclusion for Jason Zitawa? Zitawi to immediately, immediately exclude from the Pineridge Indian Reservation. And I'll skip down to the third where, fourth whereas. Whereas Jason Zitawi is a non-member who resides in Bloomingville, Colorado, and who does business at Dean's Grocery Dispensary within the the Pineridge Indian Reservation and has violated the law and its and is a threat to the healthy, health, safety, and general welfare of the tribal members and has caused harm to tribal communities and businesses. And whereas the matter has been reviewed by the Law and Order Committee and referred to the tribal council and recommends emergency action by issuing an order of exclusion due to the threat of irreparable harm against tribal members, communities, and tribal businesses. Now therefore be resolved that the tribal council of the Ogalsu Tribe determines there is a state of emergency in this matter and that grounds exist for immediate exclusion based on violations of tribal law and posing an immediate threat to the health, safety, and general welfare of tribal members, community, and businesses. And therefore be it further, further resolved that Jason Zitawi shall be excluded from the Pineridge Indian Reservation and any lands owned by the Ogalsu Tribe for infinite, infinite period of time. And therefore be it further resolved that the tribal president or vice president shall cause the order as attached and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth herein to be served upon Jason Zitawi by law enforcement and that any police officer shall effectuate his immediate removal from the Pineridge Indian Reservation. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Weston. Second, I, Councilman Little. Call for the vote.
James Cross? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Donner Ghost Bear? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Beef Rando?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yep.
Garfield Still? Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Ryan?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
George Dreamer Junior?
Nineteen yes, one not voting, motion carried. Okay, I think that was it. And if that is, we'll move on to Councilman Cross.
All right, thank you, um, thank you Chair, Council. Resolution of Ogalsu Tribal Council, Ogalsu Tribe, under incorporated tribe, resolution of Ogalsu Tribal Council, Ogalsu Tribe appointing Jackson Tenfingers to the position of acting general manager for the Perry Win Casino. Do you wanna skip those states, or you need it for record? How many whereas down? One, two? Okay. Whereas in the ex, exercise of these authorities, the tribal council established the Perry Win Casino on the reservation in pursuit to resolution number twenty-four dash fifty-two, March twenty-four, of March twenty-seven twenty, dash twenty-four, the tribal council appointed William Brewer as the general manager for the Perry Win Casino and whereas pursuant to ordinance number twenty-one dash forty-one, July ninth, twenty-twenty-one, the general manager for the Perry Win Casinos is a political appointee who serves at the will of the tribal council. And whereas currently there is a vacancy in the position of general manager for the Perry Win Casino. And whereas on July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, the Economic Business Development Committee recommended appointing appointing Jackson Tenfingers to the position of acting general manager for the Perry Win Casino. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogalsu Tribal Council hereby appoints Jackson Tenfingers to the position of acting general manager for the Perry Win Casino till such time as the position can be advertised and filled with motion.
Motion by Councilman Cross. Second by Councilman Weston. Question, we got it. Go ahead, Councilwoman Halverson, or Councilman Ghost Bear.
Um, I just had a question on, um, this position. It said it was open until fill. Do we have any applicants for this position? Or any letters of intent?
As of now, there's, we have four. But gosh, Stacy said four. So it's open till fill.
Is that something that we could discuss at this month's tribal council meeting? Because uh, I think the last council meeting, we said thirty days or less. And if there's four applicants, it seems like we should have it on, under a discussion for that, if there's that many applicants.
It was, it was discussed at the, um, E B and D committee that, um, that there's gonna move forward. At some point, we'll be calling a special to, to interview those, um, applicants. So it is in the process.
Yeah, 'cause we did that with the chief judge. We put them on as, um, applicants for discussion. So I feel like this position could probably be the same.
Well, Councilman Ghost Bear, and Council, Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston.
Thank you Chair, um. You know, James, I know you guys had that meeting yesterday, but we was trying to call it on Friday. And that's when we really should took action, was last Friday. When nobody was answering their phones, it was all at the casino. But you know, I got a problem with this guy that we're trying to point. 'Cause all he's gonna do is call him, is cause worse, more things to happen. It's just gonna get worse and worse and worse. I don't feel, I'm not confident with him even being in that position. I heard too many stories about him. I get calls about him daily, texts. And I think it's just that, you know, I'm not a good point. Maybe we do need to look at him, 'cause he's just gonna cause more harm. And as it is, the casino's already locked this close to be shut down anyways. I got concerns about it. I know other people do too, but, um, I know it was discussed yesterday, I couldn't make it. But I just got a concern with that guy. I mean, it's not, it's just gonna get worse, James. Um. But you know what Chair? Um, I know other people got questions, but that, that's it.
Councilman Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah, you know, I know they had that meeting yesterday, but, uh, that was you know, the task force as well as the E B and D, but you know, I think some of us, like myself, was at a funeral yesterday. So couldn't be there. But, um, I really have concerns, 'cause we get the calls too. So, you know, now that we're on this, uh, resolution here to appoint Mr., um, uh, Tenfingers, you know, we're still getting calls and text messages. And I really think we need to get, um, an update from the task force, maybe today, as to what is going on with our casino, 'cause I did talk to Mr. Weston yesterday, and he kinda gave me an update as to what you guys did. And I really think that, um, as a council, we need to probably get updated today as to what is gonna happen with our casino. And, um, uh, there's, I know there's, uh, talking about changes that are gonna take place. But I really do have some concerns. Um, I really wish and hope that we can get a GM in there, and I don't know, Stacy, how many applied so far? Or, and I think we need to know who they are. And, uh, maybe we need to set up, uh, uh, interviews for them and to see what they can bring in, because we're getting questioned, uh, even about, when is this assessment gonna happen? You know, when is the assessment gonna take place at the casino? We did approve that, and you were working on that. So I think, um, now we're hearing that, uh, he has concerns. So again, I'm just thinking, could we get an update today? On what happened yesterday?
It would have to be an executive session.
We go into executive?
Is that your motion?
A motion to go into executive on this issue.
Okay, Councilman Greenwell, you have a question?
Is there anything that can be reported to the people that doesn't require executive? Obviously, they understand that our casino's in a bad way, but I don't know that people understand how bad it is. And so I think at some point, we need to like, Ja- Jackie and Sonia, you guys are talking about a report. Our people need to hear a report, so it's not like a surprise to anybody. We need to be open with them, you know, about our casino side. Whatever we can divulge that isn't critical sensitive, if we could get a report like that.
Yeah, we could, we could put something together, um. But regarding the finances, I think that, that's what has to be discussed at executive. And, and, uh, and as of last Friday, that was, um, some of you, some of you know that the E B and D Committee and the Youth Affairs alternate Fridays. And so last Friday was Youth Affairs Committee. And so, that's, that's, that's the reason why the committee didn't meet after last Friday, but I know, um, Chair, Chair, Chair Lady, Ms. Spotted Bear, she stopped to me and wanted to have, have an emergency, but we did, that's why we set the meeting up yesterday. And it was a last minute meeting due to the circumstances that the casinos and so. So it's, so that's Sonia's motion. Um, if Mrs. White Horse is here, Cora, Treasure?
No, I don't think she's gonna be here this afternoon either.
Okay, and as far as the task force goes, the task force met twice, um. The first meeting was only, um, there was only Mr. Standing Soldier and, uh, Mr. Randle there. The second meeting, there was only myself there. So that's how the task force's been going. So we need to, we need to be consistent on that. We need to, you know, if we're gonna be on our task force, we need to, um, rally, show up, and I know we meet on committee days, and that's clearly hard for council to, 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 um, to juggle their time. So we'll just keep moving forward with it. I know we got a resolution putting two more members on. And so I think with, you know, with the way the situation is with Perry Winds, I think we really have to be serious about that, try to you know, do something and put a plan together and some options. So. But as far as the casino, you know, we, the, the, the acting GM did state that, that they are in the process of, uh, actually, the, the situation with, um, the the cooling, the air conditioning is is in the, in the works, but it don't look like it's gonna happen right away. And so I know the customer's been feeling a lot of the, a lot of the, um, the heat inside the building, and so it's just, it's been that way, you know, we tried to address this way back in March, but we couldn't get no movement with the past GM to try to get the system up. And so it's, it's been frustrating, um, but we wanna go into executive session, we can do that, Chair?
Motion to go into executive?
Yes.
So I need somebody second?
We don't have a second. Was that you, uh, Councilman Ghost Bear? Second, okay. Secretary, call for the vote.
James Cross?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly?
No.
Donner Ghost Bear? Bo Little White Man? Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Beef Rando?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? Garfield Still?
Nope.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
David Poyer? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
No.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Richard Greenwell Senior? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, five no, two not voting, motion carried. Okay, Sergeant Arms, go into executive at three forty-two.